Of the city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, held May ninth, twenty sixteen. At four P M. at the city council chambers. City clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Linsky.
Here.
Councilmember Garrison.
Present.
Councilmember Howdige.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Piper is absent.
She's just driving.
She's just driving up. Mayor Jones.
Here. Thank you. Okay. Overview of the city's twenty seventeen fiscal year budget. Mister Rodriguez, take it away.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Um, let me, let me start by giving you the page number we'll be looking through today. Uh, I know it's a, it's a really long agenda, but I promise some of these are really small departments and there are really not ones to talk about. Um, city council is on page eighty-five. Administration is on page seventy-seven. City clerk is on page ninety-three. Legal is on page one twenty-one. Natural resources, page eighty-nine. Finance, page ninety-seven. Personnel, page eighty-one. I T., page one oh-one. Purchasing, one oh-five. Non-departmental, one twenty-five. Debt service, two twenty-one. Deduciary funds, two sixty-seven. Engineering services, one twenty-nine. Public works, one thirty-three. Planning and zoning, one oh-nine. Building maintenance, one thirty-seven. Water, two fifty-seven. Wastewater, two fifty-one. Airport, two oh-one. Street maintenance and construction, one seventy-five. And C I P. is two thirty-three.
Okay, so.
Let me just.
There's, it says there's no page eighty-five in the document, but that's because I was putting it up here in where you do a search, but that, we don't do it that way. We have to go to the page that you have here. You know, the, the top of Adobe Acrobat where it says so many pages out of three hundred? That's not what we can use, correct?
No.
Okay, thank you.
My, mine's loading up here, so.
Oh, it is loading.
Yeah, we're good. I found it. Thank you.
So eighty-five is actually like ninety. Yeah, never mind. It's ninety-two.
It's seventy-eight on mine. Cause I got a surface. Okay, we can do that.
Okay, Mayor, Council. Um, we're, we're only doing two days this year. If by any chance we need a third day, we'll have to work something out in next week or so. Uh, we kind of put the same similar structure as we have in the past. I do an overview of the, the budget, the kind of budgetary highlights, and then we go to department by department. Uh, I'll be honest with you, there's not, there are many changes from the last year to this year. Okay, the resources are still as, as they were in the past. So we're, we'll, we'll try to hit anything. Any questions you have, uh, we can discuss them as that particular department comes along. If not, there's, there's plenty of time for you to go ahead and call me afterwards, after this meeting, next meeting, next week, whenever you like. We can sit down, discuss each and every one of the departments or any questions you might have. So remember that this is just a proposed budget. We can still make changes to this. Uh, until, actually, we can always make changes to the budget, but, uh, after this, we'll meet, uh, to have a public hearing on the tentative budget, which actually sets the, the limit on how much we can spend if we can break that threshold, but we can go ahead and move resources around from one area to another. Then we finally have a, a final budget, which will have a hearing, a final budget meeting. And remembering that this is a document that is, is a living, breathing document. It gets worked all year long. Some, some fine items will go a little bit over, others will go a little bit below. But nonetheless, uh, we do budgetary adjustments during this time of year for the current fiscal year, and then they change when we finally do have an idea.
Could I just add also that if any member of the public has a question, that they're welcome to call you and, and get an explanation if they would like to?
Certainly, Mayor. Any, anytime, you, as you all know, my doors are always open for people to come in and talk to me. And, uh, so just give me a holler, and most of the time I have time here today to kind of break away and sit down with people. Occasionally I don't, but those will, those can make an appointment. As I do in the, in the past year, to kind of briefly go over, uh, I just, I have not briefly go over, actually, I just put up some, some acronyms out there that you'll find throughout the entire document. This is a three-hundred-page document, and as you go through it, you'll notice areas that have big red letters that say still under construction. Because this, this document changes every single time we work on it. Numbers change, and it deals with, you notice there's a lot of numbers in it. A lot of narratives are inside of here. We have performance measures. We have, uh, goals and accomplishments. We have, uh, uh, narratives for, um, budgetary highlights. So it's always, it's always changing. And we try to give you a document that's, that's about as complete as we possibly can. But you may recall that, uh, council asked us to move our, our budgetary adoption from August all the way up to the end of June, so we could start July first with, with the final budget. And that's still kind of, you having this kind of struggle to try to get our budgets done in a timely fashion. Unfortunately, the document we have in this has, has a lot of areas that are noted as still under construction. Dominantly, the five-year plans are still not in place, uh, but a lot of the narrative is. So, uh, this, this will change as we go along to the tentative and then to the final. But these acronyms are all throughout the, um, the document. And if by chance, eh, as you go through documents, if there are any acronyms that you spot that you cannot tell, and are not explained here, please get back to me and I will happily put it in the glossary in our final budget document. Let me explain the, the budget this year. It was a, a really tough budget. Our first round of budget meetings, and these are conducted with our department head, uh, we send them out a form that basically tells them this is where you're at at the current fiscal year. You have, please give us your projections, finish up this year, so we can make budgetary adjustments for the current fiscal year. Any resources that last, that are left over, we roll them into next fiscal year, so we go ahead and plan the, the following fiscal year, which in this case would be two thousand and seventeen. And we asked them to, excuse me, give us a, a base budget, meaning no capital, no personnel. Bottom line is, if a project's going on, it has to continue. But we do not, we asked them, what did it take to open the doors for the next year, with nothing else having changed? By the time we were done, we actually looked at, at the base budget and we were short by around five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, when I get a budget like that, city manager and myself sit down and, and, and my assistant, we sit down and we discuss. Well, is there anything that's really urgent that's pending next year? Uh, any additional personnel, any kind of capital that we're, that we urgently need? Uh, do we need to make operational changes and so forth? When we sat down, we talked about it. We made some changes of capital, major capital projects such as, um, the Amiga Street. We had the full project in there. Obviously, it won't get done in the next year, so part of it, cause it's in two sections, part of it had to be shifted out to two thousand and eighteen, which allowed us to get as far down as a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the red, not, not extra. We went ahead and contacted the departments and asked them, let's go through another round of cuts and see where, where we can come up with a little bit more cash. And the reason I have police fire in, in the red center of parks is because they're the ones who actually came in and did some, some adjustments and some cuts, so we could go ahead and balance the budget. Mind you, if you look at the council's budget, that hundred thousand dollars, uh, undesignated reserves that you ask for every year, that's already been cut to quite a bit in order to go ahead and balance the budget. Um, and as you can see, uh, currently, the budget is at seventy-two million, eight hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Were you?
Yes, sir.
You said that the, the base budget didn't include any, any capital money in it for departments?
Correct.
So when, how, how did extending the street project into fiscal year eighteen help that budget come down?
The all, all we did was move the project out, okay? Because what ended up happening is, project is, is already going on. We're using, spending current resources. So what we did is move it into the following year, so that we can go ahead and concentrate on this year. Any remaining resources next year will be going and shifted into the two thousand and seventeen calendar, uh, fiscal year.
But I mean, isn't the money being spent on that street? Is that not capital money that's being spent on that street project?
It, it's capital money as well as, as general fund money. Remember, we do get H R F. money. We get about three, we get about seven hundred thousand dollars in H R F. money. We'll touch base on that. But three hundred thousand of it is salaries. The rest of it, we accumulate it. We won't use it this year, but we will be able to use it the following year, as well as capital money that we already, uh, bonded for. Or be, I'm used to using the surface, and I'm using this other thing right now. One of the things I wanted to make sure we touched base, because we did make some, uh, some personnel adjustments. And every year I bring the, especially the personnel and capital are some of the biggest costs. Uh, of course, personnel being, uh, recurring. The top half of this sheet actually shows the requests that were made for this current fiscal year. We have a, a deputy fire chief, radio technician, uh, two, uh, library clerks, radio and evidence technician, records and evidence technician, admin assistant for planning, and transit, three transit drivers. Um, when we went over the budget, there was, there was actually five positions that we went ahead and put in here. The radio technician, uh, is a full-time position for I T. Basically, that'll be funded through the elimination of contracts that we currently have. Uh, we pay dearly on contracts for, to, to have our, our communication center fully operational, not necessarily in the facility, but out on the field. It's the radio technician that'll be out there working on towers and making sure that things are, are running fine. Currently, like I said, we have contracts. We'll be eliminating those contracts, and that'll pay for the radio technician. Uh, currently, we have a half-time administrative assistant over in planning and zoning. We'll be making that as a full-time, kind of playing, uh, uh, administrative assistant in that position, so it won't be more all too expensive, about forty-five thousand dollars overall. Excuse me, I've got a bit of a science problem. And then, uh, transit will be asking for three, uh, three positions next year. And that's already put, put together in our A dot grant that we talked to, to A dot on, uh, Friday of last week. And most of these positions will be funded, uh, through, um, through Sedona. Uh, in case, uh, you may not have heard, uh, they're changing the way they handle transit systems. What we call a commuter route between here and, and Sedona, they term it as a regular route, as a fixed route. Whenever you have a fixed route, you're required to have paratransit available. Uh, right now, Sedona does have, uh, a paratransit over there that they're funding, but it's very, very light. It'll be the primary area. We need to set up a full-blown paratransit system. That will require a number of drivers that we have up, up here, and A dot has said that they will fund those. And those will be basically Sedona's tickets, not necessarily ours.
So we're, we're hiring on three new transit drivers, but Sedona's paying for them?
Paying their portion of it. Remember, these are, these will be probably, uh, paid out. These are fifty-fifty, or eighty-twenty. They pay the, the matching funds to.
So the rest are coming from an A dot grant?
The rest of the salary.
The rest of the salary, yeah. And then the city of Sedona pays the matching twenty percent.
Yeah, and they also cover, of course, the, where we need a couple of buses that will get into the grant. We, we already have planned for that grant. They will also cover, they have to cover all the matching portion of the maintenance and operation of that paper system.
So I, but I'm confused. If it's, if it's on their s- if it's their system, then why, why aren't they hiring the folks?
Because we run the grant.
Oh, I see. So they don't.
We run the Cap Lake's grant, and so we, we are the grantor. We.
Okay.
We, we apply for all the grant monies that are going to be used on, on all the systems.
Okay.
We had a number of reclassification requests. Fire requested, uh, paramedic pay for, uh, for sixteen, uh, global individuals. Not necessarily sixteen, but sixteen totals. They already have some paramedic pay out there. Uh, wastewater three, uh, operational. There, we're basically looking at trying to always have an, an additional person ready on the wings in case we need, uh, some additional help over at the wastewater treatment plant. And then, uh, the reclassification from the purchasing agent to the purchasing contracts administrator. Only the purchasing agent to the purchasing contract administrator is included in the budget. There was also some part-time, uh, staffing requested. Uh, fire prevention and training support specialist, records clerk. Was, and a record clerk was requested by fire. Library, uh, was looking for a, a library clerk for both for youth and adult services. Uh, neither of these items were funded for this upcoming year. Um, we, we did eliminate one position, and this is how we were able to balance the budget. There was one, we have a, a few vacancies. And he, our police chief, uh, I think is doing this assessment of staffing, and he said he could probably do without a police officer, and that's what helped us go ahead and balance this particular budget. And I did put a caveat on there that chances are this, this one, the position will eventually be needed back in. You may recall, last year, our previous chief also eliminated a position, so we are going to be down into this two positions from what we had in the past. As I knew every year, I give you a, a kind of a brief update on where we are on, on employee benefits. Uh, our mayor program currently is fully funded and budgeted to three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. The, the cost of living adjustment for sub, uh, for the upcoming year is fully funded at zero. I kind of had to put a smiley there, because this year, the cost of living adjustment is actually zero dollars, zero percent. Uh, we were hoping to get caught up from last year. Unfortunately, we weren't, we aren't able to. Uh, but, you know, it, it showed up as, as, as zero, so we're, I guess, good to go. Uh, longevity, uh, there was about, originally about forty-seven thousand dollars in longevity. We went ahead and eliminated that in order to be able to balance the budget. There's a few bright things in our budget. One of them, of course, is our health insurance premium. In past years, we've been staying well, well below, uh, uh, industry standard, double digits. We've been red, roughly between six and seven percent this year. Uh, we're looking at a, only a two percent increase, and that's because we had a, an excellent year last year, so we were able to keep the, the, the increase fairly low. We do continue to fund employees' benefits, uh, health insurance benefits at a hundred percent, and we continue to subsidize, uh, the employee-dependent coverage as we have in the past.
What's the subsidy rate on, on that, if you don't mind me interrupting you?
What's that?
On the dependence, what's the subsidy rate for that?
It all depends on, on what kind of a plan you have. If you have, we've got four different plans. We've got three different H S A. plans, and then we have a core plan. And then we have employee-only, employee plus spouse, employee and children without a spouse, and then full family. So it all, it all depends on, on which one, which plan you have.
The city puts in some money and then the employee puts in the rest. Is that how that works?
Correct, yeah.
What's the range of city contribution?
Forty to sixty percent.
Forty to sixty percent.
Retirement, uh, as you can see, we're still, we're still way up there on retirement. Uh, A S R S. went up just slightly. Still nearly a million dollars for, for about a hundred and fifty employees. Uh, with, uh, fire and P D., uh, didn't go up very much, but they alone are one point one, one point two million dollars. Um, as, as, uh, just a side note, both fire and P D., we plan to try to pay the full amount right off the bat in July first. If not, we'll split it up in a couple payments, July and then August. And the whole idea, of course, is to go ahead and start to, uh, attain as much, uh, interest as we can by paying it upfront rather than paying it on a, on a monthly basis.
And, uh, I'm not mistaken, there's still ongoing work with that at the state level to try and change the way that cities and towns can deal with that, correct?
Hmm.
Prop one, two, four, or is that what's gonna?
It's one of them.
Try to, when that comes up, the seventeenth, that, but will be taken. Well, that cha- that won't change anything for this budget though, right?
It won't change anything for this budget. It would be changing something for the future, but at this point in time, it, it wouldn't be affecting us. Uh, it can affect, I, be honest, I think it may affect how we, how we, um, our hiring practices for police officers in the future.
And that is, it could be a detriment to recruiting people for the positions?
Well, exactly.
All right, is that what you're expecting?
We're hoping not, but we, we would, we kind of expect something like that will happen, because it's, it's two different plans between what we plan and what they're proposing. Um, I wanted to touch base on this because it's something that's, that's, that keeps coming up over and over and over again. And I just wanted to, to point this out, this one, this eighteen million, nineteen million dollars that we spent on salaries and benefits. Um, we just covered how expensive it is for retirement. Oh, and by the way, just so, this is a, as a note for those that don't understand, for fire, for, for P D., we pay the full amount. The thirty-seven percent is on the city's nickel. It's not, it's not on the employee's nickel. The eleven point five is an example in, in, on A S R S. That's a, that's eleven point five city, eleven point five employee.
So that's true for both fire and police. Now, that's under the new, um, proposition. That'll change. It'll become a fifty-fifty.
And right now, it's, it's a hundred?
Yeah, right now, it's, I think it's limited to seven point six five?
Uh, I don't even believe you can pay, say, you used to pay seven point six five. We'll definitely pay that. But you see, that's, that's one of the big things. It's, you're a police officer, and you don't have to pay the, your retirement that the city contributes. In the future, this will be a split eighteen percent that they would normally have to stake home back. So the, the plans are quite a bit different.
I'm sorry, that's a, sorry to keep getting.
Sure, no.
If that's a, that's a statewide, um, uh, law, then how is it going to make it difficult to recruit officers?
Different states.
Well, you, you bring, first of all, young people may end up going to other states that have better, more lucrative type plans. And secondly, of course, is, you, it makes it a little bit diff- more, more difficult for, for young people to, to go into something. Public safety, because of, of the type of jobs that they are, have always been a little bit more lucrative when it comes to retirement. Now, we're pretty much putting them in the same plateau as A S R S. people, which are a little bit less risky, but considerably less, less risky. And you're, you're have the same type of retirement pant lands, and a lot of people believe that it should be quite different.
So it's just, just recruiting from outside the state. It'll affect Cottonwood the same as it affects Phoenix and Mesa and all the other cities?
I, I, unless, unless they've got a totally independent plan, but I don't think anyone has an independent plan, do they?
It's all the same, and it's, it's not just the benefit issue. It's just that current politics around policing that make it a less desirable career to pursue.
An appreciation of doing the job.
The, the one reclassification, why was that such a significant increase?
What's that?
The reclassification on the, the one position. I can't find it in the documentation here, that's why.
The twenty-nine thousand for a reclassification?
Yeah.
Well, it includes salary as well as any type of benefits that go along with it.
But I mean, that's like a fifty percent increase.
No, it's not a fifty percent increase.
Well, can you bring that slide back up?
Sure.
I can't, I can't find it in here.
Went from like fifty to seventy.
I can't, I can't find it in here. Went from like fifty to seventy, I'm sorry. Went up twenty-four, twenty-one thousand, so, okay, it's not quite fifty percent.
You see, that, that's, what you have up there, your, your current salaries, you're looking at the seventy grand at the top end, forty-eight at the low end. That's just salary alone. The twenty-nine includes all Bennys. The Bennys are almost nine grand in just Bennys alone to make that change.
Well, actually, I was just purely looking at the current salary versus the increase, so, you know, the benefits, that's, you're right, that takes it up even further, but... I was just kinda curious why, to go from purchasing to purchasing contracts, it went up almost forty-five percent, forty-six percent. Uh, I mean, is that something that's going away from somebody else, or is that, who's doing that duty now?
The, do it, right now, right now, he's doing those duties.
I think, I think what Mr. Garrison's trying to say is, if we're paying somebody that much now, why are we gonna increase it?
Oh, no, well, he's taking on, remembering, he was, this, this particular individual, he works in my department. He, he was hired on as a purchasing agent to do nothing but purchasing only. Over the years, he's taken on, on business registration, you know, out of our offices, he's gone ahead and taken over, uh, to contract administrations. All the contracts are going over, I think, from city clerk, were shifted over there because he, he, he makes the contracts. He's knowledgeable about them, and he goes ahead and stays on them. So he makes sure that they all get bid out on a timely basis, makes sure that they're being administered correctly. He oversees them now, so.
So he's basically already been doing the higher paid job for a couple of years now, and he's just bringing him into parity with where he should be for what he's doing already?
For, yeah, for about the last year, you know, he's been doing it.
I, I can add something to that, too. He's, he's more than just a purchasing agent. What he's done is, is, he manages the procurement process from working with the departments to develop the solicitations, um, to putting out the solicitations, to making sure that they're conducted correctly, to then doing the contracts, and, and I work with him a lot on that. And, yeah, I, I think he's turned out to be very capable and able to, to manage the whole procurement process really well.
Thank you. So when you do reclassification, I'm assuming you contact the same company that did the initial, uh, compensation study? How, how do you figure out what the new, the job description is, new job description, title, and range and all that?
We, 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 we have a real good relationship with, with a company who, who has done our, our compensation study in the past. And we always run these, these type of things with them, including any type of change that we do. They, they look at the job descriptions, make suggestions, and then they give us an idea of where that, that rate should fall.
This is almost a good news item. I mean, this is a, an employee we brought in at kind of the basic level and, and showed the ability, he showed the ability to be able to take on more and more work, more complex work. And, um, you know, rather than hiring additional employees to do these kind of things, he's able to take on roles that, um, you know, were not required to hire somebody else to do it. So, um, it, it really is a win-win. It's a win for him and a win for the city. And that, uh, we can vest these responsibilities in this higher level of, of administrator, um, you know, into one position. He's done a great job for us, no doubt about it.
Getting back to the, this, this slide here on total salary benefits, the question's always come up, that we're spending, you know, eighteen, nineteen million dollars on salaries, and, and we are. There's, there's no doubt about it. However, that's not salaries alone. You have to realize that that includes, uh, you know, benefits, retirement, uh, you know, health insurance and so forth. But I wanna go ahead and bring this up because, as you can see, I've broken out, broken it out in three different sections. One, of course, is the overall. The, the second one is which fund is being charged for which. Obviously, you can see general fund is fourteen and a half, HRF and, and streets. And transit is one point two million dollars, one point five, one point six between streets and transit. The library is six hundred thousand. Uh, enterprise funds between the two is over two million dollars. And then we try to figure out, okay, who's actually paying for this? And general fund pays for sixteen million of it. HRF is three hundred thousand dollars. ADOT pays for half a million, and enterprise pays for two point one million dollars worth of, worth of that, eighteen point one nine million dollars. So it's not necessarily general fund that's covering all of these costs, but they, these costs are happening, and it's not necessarily salaries that's going to us, it's going to their health insurance, their retirement, their, their income tax and, and everything else that goes out there. So it's not necessarily employee salaries going into their pocket. Um, sure.
Uh, is there any money that comes in through, through grants to cover the cost of the transit employees? Aren't, aren't their, aren't their salaries covered primarily through grants and everything?
Sure, that, that ADOT grant is, is, pay, that's, that's what we pay. The five hundred thousand dollars is what we pay. The difference between the one point three million and the five hundred thousand dollars, that's, that's what ADOT pays. They'll pay eight hundred thousand dollars of the one point five million, one point three million that's up there. The four hundred ninety-nine is, is our matching portion of it. And remember, remembering that, part of that comes from, from Clarkdale, part of it comes from the county, and part of that's coming also from, from Sedona. Cause they contribute to their systems also, and that's total, again, total, the total transit system. Uh, wanted to point out that as far as the cost for the overall operations and maintenance of the, um, of the entire system, if you look at it, this is excluding our reserves and our capital. This is just maintenance and operation. This is about fifty-seven point one percent, okay, of, of our operational budgets. If you look at it, and look at it, overall budget including all reserves and capital, you're looking at twenty-six percent of the overall budget. And I just got, went and did just a couple of comparisons. If you look at Camp Verde, uh, just compared to their M and O, they're at seventy percent. It's their, their salaries. If you look at Flagstaff compared to the M and O, theirs is fifty-eight point three. So we're, we're not, we're not extraordinarily out of park. We're actually right in, in the, in a pretty good level. Uh, most cities our size, if you look at it, we're one of those cities that unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, um, are a commercial hub. We're, a, a lot of our, our things we do, we are an entertainment hub. We happen to have the bigger parks, the ball parks. We happen to have one of the bigger libraries in the area that we fund. Uh, so we happen to, to attract a lot of people, and we have to keep those parks up, we have to keep those thoroughfares out. We have to keep nice, clean areas, so we, we do spend a lot of money on personnel, but it's not ex- extraordinarily high.
Mayor and council, it's also, I think, important to note that a few years back, we did have a salary study done where our salaries were compared with, uh, similar sized cities around the state. And as you'll recall, at that time, we were below market. We did raise it up, and, and we are probably somewhere in the middle of the market in terms of cities our size. Uh, as part of that study, we also studied benefits, and again, we're about the middle of the market in terms of what, uh, what we offer in terms of benefits.
Any questions, Zonis?
Yes, you and I met a couple weeks ago. We talked about that personnel cost, um,
Mm-hmm.
as a percentage of our maintenance and operations. I think, uh, wasn't it somewhere around eighty percent, seventy-five to eighty percent is what most cities in Arizona?
A lot of cities are, are up there in the percentage. Take, for example, it was, it was, it was a little difficult to find it because it, some of, some of the CAFRs are out there a little, a little bit more varied. These were fairly easy to find. A lot of cities are up in the seventy percent range, sixty to seventy percent range. It takes, it takes staff to run cities. Okay, this is not, uh, you run it by your computer at home, and two or three people can run an entire city. This is, cities are, are heavy on staff. Again, we, we, we have a lot of park area that we keep very pristine. And we, we have events that we support, and, and we use PD, Fire, Public Works, our transit systems. All those, all those services, uh, are always running. Mind you, also, just to mention, uh, we, again, I know I always harp on this, but we're one of few for, uh, full-service communities in the, in the Verde Valley. Uh, if it wasn't for our transit system, Clarkdale and the county wouldn't, and in Sedona, wouldn't have, wouldn't have much of a transit system. We have our own fire department that we have to fund at personnel. We have our own water company at personnel. Uh, all these things add, add additional staff to us, but nonetheless...
Sedona doesn't have a library that, I mean, they pay into it, but they don't, they're not responsible for it.
They don't have a library and they don't have an airport.
And no airport and no water system.
So.
So we're very varied in the Verde Valley as to what services we offer. Some are paid by districts and property taxes in other communities.
Correct. So we're, we, we, we're staff intensive, but nonetheless, we're, we're not out of, out of the range. Considering as much, as many services and parks and amenities that we have, I think we're in relatively good shape. Go ahead into our capital outlay. Wanted to put this up there because just by department, you can go and, and look through the different departments and find out what, what they asked for and what they didn't get, as well as what they asked for and they did get. Uh, wanted to go ahead and show this because we, they started off, uh, with initial requests of twenty, nearly twenty-nine million dollars. Uh, and we broke it out by under thirty-five and over thirty-five. Next year, we're probably gonna go up to fifty thousand dollars. We used to use thirty, we still use thirty-five because you could usually find a truck for thirty-five. Try finding a tr- truck or a car for, for thirty-five, but nowadays, it gets to be more and more difficult, so we'll be raising that number. Um, now, right past that on the fourth column, or the fifth column, under adjustments, those are the cuts we actually made to the, to the different departments. Eighteen point three million dollars. We cut them down all the way to twenty point six million dollars. Now, mind you, these are both capital as well as, as vehicles and equipment that they need. That's why we broke out the under thirty-five and over thirty-five thousand. Most of the over thirty-five are bigger pieces of equipment or capital, uh, major capital projects. We're looking to, to do some financing work this year again. Uh, one of our lease purchases will be dropping off here relatively soon, and then we'll be picking up another one here. Uh, we'll probably have about a six months, a year lag between at the time, which will give us a good chance to get a little bit of a breather. Uh, we're looking to replace one of our fire trucks. You may have heard that one of our, uh, fire trucks, not necessarily our oldest one, has been having some problems. Uh, it's an American France. The company went under, no one bought it out. We can't find parts for it. As a matter of fact, our fire department, uh, uh, often calls, uh, Phoenix Fire Department, those bigger departments, to ask them if they have parts that they can spare, cause they are salvaging their, their, uh, old trucks and using them to keep the, the newer trucks running. Uh, and we can't, we're just having a hard time finding parts for that truck. The oldest truck we have, I believe, is a Pierce, and that's probably gonna remain in service as a backup. Uh, we're looking to just get rid of a newer truck that we just can't find parts for.
So who will buy it?
Whoever can keep it running or has, say, take it apart for parts.
They might have two fire trucks, and they can put one with it and keep one going or something like that.
They'll salvage the, the other one and use it for parts.
So how can, how could we have anticipated that? We, I don't think we could have.
I don't think there was any way to anticipate it. This is years ago, and, and, uh, American France is kind of like an American institution.
I think it was also part of a, uh, Phoenix contract. It was actually a contract that Phoenix put together.
I think that's what you said before.
Um, we've got a hundred twenty-six thousand dollars set aside for, for some police vehicles. As you know, we, our fleets are getting a little bit older. Uh, and so we need to start replacing. We have been replacing about two vehicles a year. Uh, the reason that they've lasted, uh, a while is because we've actually went to a one-person, one-vehicle program, and it keeps them cleaner, neater, and it keeps them in better operating order rather than having two or three different individuals tearing up those vehicles. They seem to take care of them a little bit more, so they could last a little bit longer, but nonetheless, it's time to start replacing that fleet. We're also looking to replace, uh, the street sweeper. Uh, we've already seen, we've already been looking around. I'm gonna tell you, two hundred dolla- two hundred thousand dollars is gonna be cutting it really close to replace this, to replace, uh, the street sweeper. We currently have a broom type that has an elevator that kind of scoops it up, and it costs us an hopper. We're looking to, to maybe look at the vacuum type where it actually just sucks the stuff up and, and, and loads it up into a hopper.
I know that in the past, we've looked at also going, contracting that out, but that didn't work very well.
No, it made it very difficult. We, we actually, that came to light when we had the, uh, the bicycle ride. We found our crews going out there, having to sweep the, the path because it, it was a little bit too difficult to get a contractor up from the valley area to come out here and try to sweep, uh, on our streets. Uh, we decided we went back to doing it our, our own, so.
What does, uh, what does Clarkdale do, or Camp Verde, some of the other communities around here? Do they contract, or do they have their own street sweeper?
I don't know.
Cause for as long as I've been on council, that street sweeper's been through varied stages of disrepair, and every time it goes out, it just seems to move dirt onto the street.
That's one of the reasons we're, we're looking to replace it. We, uh, Jim has done, Jim Wixson's done a great job keeping that thing running. He, he's, I think he spends more time keeping that thing running than anything else, but nonetheless, it's, it's still running. Uh, but it's, it's kind of like on its duct tape and baling wire kind of thing.
Just seems like with all the money and time we've spent on it, we'd be better off having contracted it out a long time ago. But it seems crazy they'd have to come up here from Phoenix to...
That's what we did. We contracted it out. It didn't work.
Yeah.
I mean, you ride your bike, you know that, right?
Yeah, no, it's awful. I get it, I get it. It's awful out there, but it's been on for years.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, our sweeper is, the comment about it picking up something is a little bit of a misnomer. It sweeps, but I'm not sure how much it picks up.
Yeah, moves stuff around.
I actually learned how, trained and, and actually went out and swept some streets.
I thought you did, yeah.
And it's, you know, what, uh, what they had put in for was to put an air conditioner in it because particularly, you know, you use it during the hotter months. You're sitting on top of the engine, and it's hot, and you can't open the windows because there's too much dust, and so, you, you know, that was kind of like putting lipstick on a pig, and it was, we just, we need a new one. I can remember when I first got here eleven years ago, they were talking about moving a new sweeper.
I just feel like if there's a way to collaborate with the other communities around here, too, cause you don't use it that often, you know? It'd be nice to get on a schedule, where we could all share a sweeper.
It's possible, yeah. I'm not sure what Clarkdale does, if they sweep their streets. They don't have that many streets with curves.
Do they have a street sweeper? Okay, Clarkdale.
They do have one?
Are their streets better than ours?
They are, yeah.
Do you ride there?
Um, not very frequently, but I...
So how do you know?
How do I know they're better?
Yeah.
By visiting their streets, I guess. I mean, it seems like it's...
You go and look at them and check it out.
I mean, I don't specifically go to Clarkdale to check their streets out, but I, I would say that they have a better program for keeping their streets clean than Cotton does. I could be wrong, but...
They have fewer streets probably, well, not out there. They have Black Hills and all of those places, too.
Yeah, I just think if there's a way to save a little money on it, it'd be great to, to try.
We can look into that.
A big purchase like that.
We can look into, see what everybody else is doing, and then see if there's the opportunity to coordinate.
Yeah, I mean, or if there's work, so we could rent it from them, and, you know? Cause we buy one, then we have to maintain it. My, my point is, we've been maintaining one that's been defunct for a long time, and so it just seems like all the money we pour into it, if there's a way to cost share, why not look into it?
We'll go ahead and look into it. We have, uh, two jobs of life, uh, planned for, for next fiscal year, and then we're looking to replace the rec center equipment. Matter of fact, last year was the year we planned, we originally planned to replace the rec center, uh, equipment, the cardio equipment especially. And we put it off one more year and paid additional price for, for the maintenance of it, so I think it's time to go ahead. So I think it's time to go ahead and get rid of it. We're looking at one nine point two million dollars worth of lease purchase. Traditionally, these particular lease purchases go about five years. We, we haven't extended past five years, so we have, and we kinda schedule them so that when one expires, we end up picking up another one for additional equipment. I'm sure you've seen this slide a number of times before. Um, I wanted just to point out that we're, we're finally catching up to where we were back in, uh, several years back. Uh, we have two categories, our state shared sales tax and our motor vehicle tax are, are finally at a point where they're higher than they had been in, in the recent past. Uh, unfortunately, uh, local sales tax, taxable sales are still down. We were hoping to hit, uh, the mark last, this current fiscal year, but it looks like we're gonna barely miss it, and, but we're looking to, to hit it next year. Uh, state shared income taxes, that one kinda surprised us 'cause in, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, we took a bit of a drop. Just as, as a reminder that what we collect one year is actually collections from two years past. So the collections for two thousand sixteen, which dropped, were actually income tax that was paid in in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, we're still about two hundred thousand dollars behind our highest year, which was back in two thousand and nine. Uh, taxes collected in two thousand and seven while we were still at the peak. And then our HERF funds, uh, I, I know I show a number of nine seventy-nine, but unfortunately, we would be doing a lot better as the state to keep their hands off of our HERF money, so.
Yeah, we've lost hundreds of thousands of dollars in the past, well, since two thousand and eight.
On, on HERF as well as-
From sweat funds.
And lo- and lottery funds. You may recall, we, we lost all of our lottery funds to the state a few years ago.
And they're not coming back, is that correct?
They keep trying every year, but it, it falls on deaf ears. HERF is getting hit by the state, lottery money got hit from the state. This year, we lost over fifteen thousand dollars in, in, uh, in business registration fees 'cause the state re, said that we could not collect on, on, um, on rental properties. We cannot register rental properties, which makes it a little bit difficult for us to audit them. So we're getting hit all over by the, by the state, and we just, we just have to manage it somehow.
Can they just sell a little extra state trust land?
Yeah, there you go.
Works for other things.
Wanted to mention, we still, we still fund our, our sixty-eighty reserve, not necessarily as the sole in cash, but it is, it is cash and assets that we have. We maintain the capital accumulation fund, that one is a million dollars that we have in cash set aside. You may recall that we've limited, uh, that amount at, at a million dollars. Uh, we have used it in the past, we used it to, uh, rebuild the senior center. Uh, help fund, we funded with a, I believe, CEVD grant and about a three hundred thousand dollar donation from the city of Cottonwood, from that particular fund. But we're still sitting on a million dollars there. Our undesignated reserves, which I call our cush, we usually, council had been requesting that it stay at a hundred thousand. This year made it a little bit tough for us, so we kinda dipped into it. Uh, we left twenty-seven thousand dollars in here. Our one percent sales tax, uh, general fund capital is at zero, and that point two percent sales tax for public safety is, is at zero also. Uh, so you know the public safety money will probably not come back for a while. Uh, we are using that to help, uh, pay for the eight hundred thousand dollar lease purchase for the communications center. All that equipment that they, IT equipment that they needed over there. Wanted to put this out there, um, you'll, you'll see it, uh, eventually on the budget on the very first page. Uh, we made a point to put this particular slide in there, 'cause we always had a lot of questions as to why our, why is our budget so big? We budget for all kinds of contingencies, uh, but we've set aside our reserves. If we think we're gonna go out for a million dollar grant, we put in the million dollar grant. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna happen, but if it does, we wanna make sure we have the budget authority. That's why we have original budgets, you know, our largest one has been a hundred and thirty-two thou, two, a hundred and thirty-two million dollars. By the time it was all said and done, we actually only spent forty-two million dollars. Um, same as, as a lot of these, if you look at the sudden drop, this is the original budget, this is what you'll adopt. This year, you will have dropped a revised budget for the current fiscal year and an original budget for next fiscal year. And that's where you'll start seeing these particular drops. And then, of course, these are straight out of our audit, and you can see it drops even further because the department had believed that they're going to finish a project or we were going to do some financing, but it didn't happen. And then, so we just have to write it, you know, we just have to kind of just let it fall by the wayside and it doesn't get picked up. Move on to, we'll be talking about this more tomorrow. We still have all our agencies, uh, funded next year at the same levels we have them this year. Uh, with exception of the Chamber of Commerce, this year, we estimate they're gonna do a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Next year, they're gonna do about two hundred and one thousand dollars there. We have been real fortunate, uh, in that aspect, that our hotels are, are staying relatively, I shouldn't say full, but they're staying active. Uh, and that's what, that's what that money, that, that bed tax, all of it goes to the Chamber of Commerce. We're looking at a hundred and two thousand dollars for next fiscal year.
A hundred and two?
Oh, sorry, two hundred and one thousand.
Okay, thanks.
Is that before or after CEDC?
That's separated now.
There, we've got them split up, I believe they're, they're separate now.
But that amount includes both, 'cause I didn't see a CEDC there, is that correct?
Did it break out the CEDC this year? Excuse me? Okay, it may be, we'll, we'll have to check on, just, we'll, we'll send you an email on whether it got broken out or not. We s, we do, we do, we are splitting to eighty-five, fifteen now.
Right.
On that last slide, you, um, had a list of organizations that were going to present. And maybe it's different than this, but wasn't there another, um, nonprofit that was gonna present the SCATS to recovery homes?
Correct.
They were invited to present pivot?
Yes, I sent, I sent them, uh, an email to go ahead and, and present. I did tell them, I did tell them, as, as I did everyone else, uh, the, the, the budget is very, very tight and, but currently, I did tell Damian that he, he wasn't in the budget. So he'll have to make a presentation and depending on what council decides, we can go from there. Uh, and, oh, didn't, didn't mention that the building community grants is, is still funded for next year, about fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, right now, we've got the, the applications have come in, I finally have a full committee. Uh, we should be coming to council, if not, uh, later this month, the first part of June. And the funding will be for July first, two thousand and sixteen, through, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. So we've still got some time to go ahead and get those community grant funds out. Uh, the next meeting is, is tomorrow at four P M. again. Uh, June seventh is the planned public hearing and the tentative budget adoption when we set our expenditure limitation. And then two weeks later, is, uh, we're planning a public hearing with a final budget adoption. Any, any questions about it? Okay. You'll give me just a minute, we'll go ahead and start setting up for, for the, the other departments, so we can go ahead and get moving on those. A lot of the smaller departments, uh, have asked me to handle their form, as, as we have in the past. I don't know if there's any way to cut that glare, Mayor, I can see that glare is really hitting you.
I can move my truck. That would help.
Yeah, it's those chrome rims, it'll do it every time.
Like maybe a vehicle? Ooh, we can wait. We'll wait, it's just gonna take a minute.
There, there's really no major changes to this. Uh, all the, the, uh, the Verde Valley Senior Centers in there, the Old Town Center for the Arts, Old Town Association, Building Better Community Grants that are all in here. Uh, let me see. Just so you note, on page eighty-seven, the reserves, three point nine million dollars are all inside of this particular budget. Uh, as, and if you look to the left of that particular number at the very top section of it, uh, it gets eliminated when we do the revision because obviously, we're not gonna use it. Uh, we're not giving the mayor and council a salary increase this coming year.
Kevin had one for ten years, or, when was, when did that happen, two thousand and?
Oh, gosh.
Three or four?
Something like that, I don't even know if we had one then.
When Steve Dockry left, he voted, he wanted to raise them, and he voted, or put it on the agenda, whenever that was.
Notably, uh, the rodeo drive reimbursement has, is going away. We were doing nearly three hundred thousand dollars, we're, we, it has disappeared this upcoming year. And at the very bottom of page eighty-eight, you can see how the, the reserves are broken out as they were displayed on the screen. Questions? The next one is administration, page seventy-seven.
Want me to take that one, Rudy?
Certain.
This is the, uh, budget essentially for the city manager's office. Um, it's predominantly salaries, it has, uh, my salary in it, the, uh, assistant to the city manager, our administrative assistant, and, uh, the two general managers, uh, Richard and Rudy. And, uh, since the two thousand and fifteen, uh, budget, uh, the budget has decreased by fourteen percent because we eliminated one general manager position. Um, in terms of the rest of the budget, it's pretty much consistent with, uh, what we had last year. And, uh, there's a small increase in terms of, um, supplies and, um, postage and freight, or postage, uh, computer support. Um, that's pretty much it. Be happy to answer any questions?
The next one, the next budget we have is the city clerk's budget, page ninety-three.
Uh, my budget is pretty much the same as last year's. It's, um, salaries, office supplies, coffee supplies. Um, there's, there are no, I made no request for any capital purchases of any type.
I think the only thing on here is the election expenses we have to do.
Yes, we have, uh, fifteen thousand dollars for election expenses. Uh, an election will probably be running seventy-five hundred. I'm not sure what the exact fee will be from the county, but next, under next fiscal year, we have the August primary and the November general. So, uh, there is a possibility that we will go over the fifteen thousand, I'm not sure yet, it, because it, I will, will be billed by the county and it depends on how many, um, ballots, if, if there's requests for early ballots that they send out, they charge us for each one of those. And then, it's, since we're consolidating with the county for our elections, it's a percentage of what our portion costs for the ballots and so forth. So we don't know the actual cost until they bill us. But we will probably use all the fifteen thousand dollars, if not a little more. Depends on what the county's fees are this election cycle, and they generally go up every, every year.
So we're still, we're still paying them to mail out the ballots and we're still using them to do that? It'll all, it'll be all mail ballot, is that right?
No, it's not all mail ballot because we're consolidating with the county, they're, they're gonna have, uh, polling places. They don't, they don't conduct all mail ballot elections. So we're consolidating with them.
We'll no longer do that with them? They'll no, they'll no longer mail the ballots out for Cottonwood, right? We don't have to pay them for that, but it's still gonna, we'll still get charged.
Only the people who request ballots, I think, will send them out for it.
You can request an early ballot.
Yes, you can request an early ballot. If you're, if you're on the county's, um, list for either permanent or call in and, and ask for an early ballot, then those will be mailed to you. If, if not, then, um, the polling places are open on election day. So yes, we'll probably have a fairly high percentage of ballots being mailed out.
Got it.
Do you have a percentage of how many Cottonwood residents get a, a mailed ballot?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't know how many Cottonwood, uh, residents are on the county's ballot request.
Any more questions from Mary Ann? We'll move on to legal, that's on page one twenty-one.
Mayor and council, uh, very similar budget to last year. It covers me, uh, prosecution, code enforcement, and outside services. And I guess I'd, uh, break down the outside services. It's, uh, primarily seems to be, um, fall into two categories. The airport, um, which is, hopefully, that's gonna, we're gonna be able to reduce those expenditures uh, related to outside legal assistance for the airport. But we have the G R L matter, uh, we've had, uh, the FAA looking into leasing practices. We've had, um, we have ongoing discussions about hangar leases and, and our practices, both current and going forward with those. And we had a, um, uh, we have a, a skydiving operation that we had, uh, some, the beginnings of some litigation with, that we had some expenditures for. So, this, but, oh, and the other category- So, this, but, oh, and the other category is, is development. We have, uh, some very large, uh, historically large for Cottonwood development projects, um, on the table. And we're using land use council to assist us with development agreements, infrastructure agreements, um, sort of areas where we just, the, the kind, small mistakes can, can prove very costly and we just need to make sure we get that right. The upside to that is, uh, may require some modification of, of existing code, but, and within some discussions and negotiations, but we are able to recoup, uh, those review outside council fees. Uh, we should be able to recoup those as part of the development agreements and infrastructure agreements. And be happy to answer any questions.
So, just so the public understands, at one time before we hired you, we had, we were discussing having a couple of attorneys, I think, and staff to support them and you essentially do this job by yourself with some outside help, which is always expert rather than people that don't know what they're doing. And you also, the city clerk's office assists you, or otherwise you do it yourself.
All true, and as well as, uh, the, uh, the purchasing manager, um, has been, you know,
Helping with contracts and...
Very important functions, um, that, that I help with, the clerk's office helps with, and, and now Jeff takes primary responsibility for, is making sure the procurement is done right.
The i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
And he does it well, um, he does it right, and he saves the city money. And that assists me greatly. Uh, but I think what this budget does is approximate, so I think I've been in-house now. Um, this will be going on seven years. This budget is now about what, uh, the city was paying seven years ago for, uh, to have the entire dysfunction, the whole legal department contracted.
So you're increasing your outside counsel a little bit more this, this coming budget in, in anticipation?
I am, um, and it's primarily anticipa, and again, uh, I'm hoping that, that we get things together, uh, to be able to recoup a, a lot of that on the, on the development project side. But we have, uh, the eighty-nine and Vine project that we're in the middle of, of negotiations around an infrastructure agreement and, and that's just hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, worth of utility infrastructure, uh, that we're negotiating for to make sure that new development pays for itself. As council will recall, we, we no longer have impact fees. Uh, so we have to make sure that developer makes the, all the necessary commitments, uh, to provide the infrastructure for that development so that the cost of that isn't borne on the backs of, of existing utility customers. So we have the eighty-nine Vine project and then we have the Vineyards project that, uh, we're gonna be very shortly negotiating a development agreement for. And I expect to use outside counsel assistance for that.
Any additional questions? We'll move on to natural resources, page eighty-nine. Tom asked me to go ahead and handle this for him because basically there, there is the only change on the, uh, on his budget is, is the merit part, the merit part of it. Outside of that, uh, most everything is about the same with the exception of, uh, maybe some copier supplies and, and, um, and utilities going up fairly cut and dry. Move on to finance, page ninety-seven. We had no accomplishments or goals. My fault, I didn't get him into, to Helen. Overall, the budget is, it's pretty static. Some minor changes, increase in, in our audit expense. Are, that's, that's probably one of the biggest items that we have on here. We do, we're still funding the, uh, state annual municipality fee, which goes to Arizona Department of Revenue because they just, they've decided that they're gonna collect sales tax and they're gonna charge us for it, something they've done since they've been, since they've been around and they just decided they were gonna charge us for it. So this will be the second year, last year was twenty-four thousand, this year we're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars worth of fees that we'll be having to pay to A D O R to collect our money. Outside of that, we don't have, uh, all too many changes. Little bit more copier supplies, and that's really about it.
So Sedona self-collects still, right, their sales tax?
No, not anymore.
They passed the law.
They changed all that.
All that, there's no self-collecting cities anymore.
Would that take effect in July?
It took effect January, I believe, of this year. Yeah. When they brought them on board, someone got the idea, well, let's collect from everybody and they are now.
Plus, they don't have the infrastructure, the I T infrastructure to take care of it, so it's...
Um, y- you're, you're, you're correct, it, uh, they, they are supposed to be reporting in a certain manner to us and they're not. Uh, they don't have the infrastructure. They have been making promises for the last two years that they're gonna go ahead and get us the reports away that they need to be done and, uh, they pretty much took the, the deadline off the table and said, we'll get to it and we'll get to it. On a positive note, um, you may, uh, remember the name Carlton Woodruff, who was the finance director over at Clarkdale, very sharp man. Um, we keep, uh, close, uh, touch with each other and I know that, uh, he's very city municipality oriented and he's been pushing, uh, his, that department, he's now the deputy administrator, deputy director of the Arizona Department of Revenue. If you haven't heard, they've already cleaned house, uh, in that department. They've cut back, I believe, uh, ten to fifteen percent of staff. Deadwood, as he put it, is, is now out. Uh, they're trying to get more and more efficient and I think the new director and the assistant director are really getting after it. So we hope to see some great things from them in the near future. There's no questions, we'll move on to personnel, that's on page, uh, eighty-one. Wanted to base, I usually let you go through your, your, your accomplishments and goals on your own. So if you have any questions, please make sure you forward them over to me. Uh, just wanted to know that we will post this particular budget up on the city's website, uh, today or, well, by Wednesday. We should have it up on the website as well as the presentation that we put up here. Wanted, just to, to mention one thing on, on, uh, Iris's accomplishments and one of them, of course, is the safety consultant that we, we were going to share with the cities and we were not able to because that all, the other cities weren't able to come together with the revenue funding for it, has, has, uh, really worked out for us. Uh, they, the, the gentleman, um, can't remember his name, uh, is, is, is pretty active. He's very positive and he's really good at, at getting things done, he knows his regulations. So we've, we've kinda taken a big step forward in safety, um, with, with, with Iris and this, this gentleman, uh, keeping track of our, of our safety issues. We've had to do a number of salary studies that you, as you asked about the, uh, purchasing and the contract administrator's position. Uh, whenever we have changes or, uh, staff wants us to go ahead and have a job description reviewed or a classification or step, we, uh, send it to them. We've been real fortunate that they haven't billed us a penny and this has been several years that they've been looking at our contracts. A lot of it is the rapport that Iris has with the consultants. She sends them stuff over, doesn't rush them, whenever they have time, they turn it around and get it back to us and it hasn't cost us a cent. Since we had that contract, uh, compensation study, what, three years ago or so, we haven't paid another dime on, on a lot of the adjustments that we've asked them to look at. So that's really good for us. As far as the budget is concerned, on page eighty-three, um, there are no, there's a couple of changes. I shouldn't say no changes, there's just a couple of changes that are, that are reflected on here. Um, we do have, uh, contractual services, we have a little bit of spike. And, um, do you recall what that spike was on the contractual services? I'm not sure if it was a Dell that was gonna be...
I'm wondering if that's, uh, would that include psychologicals for the police officers and dispatchers?
Uh, probably so. I would suspect that that's probably the one that she's got in there.
Rudy? Sir, I'm just looking on the supplemental data for, for personnel. It looks like there's two that have zero in that slot, so are, are we actually running two people down there right now?
Uh, say what again, I'm sorry?
Under the supplemental data for personnel?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm noticing we have, there's five positions there and there's only two that have, or there's two that have zeros.
Right.
So we're correct, we're just running two people down at that time.
Uh, we, yeah, we have two positions down here, the only reason, the only reason, we, we have two and a half, actually. We have an administrative assistant, which is, um, uh, I can't believe I can't remember her name, Jamie.
Jamie Hausman.
Jamie Hausman. Uh, she's, she's split between finance and, and H R and then we have Iris and we have Amanda in there. The other position, the only reason we have, still have them in there is because at one time we had them and either we re-classed them, but we have to maintain them there, so we have comparatives from year to year. Wanted also mention the travel training, uh, we, we increased it a little bit. Part of that is, uh, Iris is hoping to retire someday and I will keep her changing her desk as long as I possibly can, but in the meantime, she's working feverishly to train Amanda, even more than she, she already is trained, uh, to be able to, uh, cover, if not replace her, uh, when the time comes. So we were, we're kinda stepping up Amanda's training quite a bit. Any questions? As a reminder, you can always call me or, or email me with any questions you have if you sit down and read this at your leisure this evening about ten o'clock at night. We'll move on to information technology, page one oh-one. One oh-three has their, their budget.
I'm seeing the, the increase in personnel, but I'm not seeing the corresponding decrease in contracted services. So did that not come out of their budget, did that come out of the police budget or?
That, that comes out of the police budget. Well, out of their, their communication budget is where it comes out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Again, their, their biggest increase is in, is in personnel. Uh, we are looking at a, uh, the G I S technician will be full-time this upcoming year. Uh, currently he is, he is working at the police department. He's, he's doing a lot of the mapping work for the, uh, uh, the new fire departments that have come on board to our communications center, so he has to do a lot of mapping work. We're hoping to release him within next, uh, you know, twelve, six to twelve months for other such, such things, fire department, for their hydrants, for the water department, for their, for their lines and valves, uh, and, and also for, for street mapping and stuff. So we, we're expecting quite a bit of work for him. But right now, he's, he's spending a lot of his time over at the police department communications center. The radio technician is also inside of this budget. So there, this staff, this is one of those areas that has grown quite a bit over the last few, you know, I think, five years or so, six years since, since Brent came on boards. And as you can see, you know, you, we have a lot more technology. Uh, we, our, our systems have become a lot faster, we have redundant systems all throughout the city. And, and that became very important when our offices got bombed, but we were up and running. At least our computers were up and running within an hour's time, we were fully functioning. Our community, our phone systems were a little bit different story, uh, but that had already been handled also, so...
So with bringing on more employees in I T tech, that's, that's going to save us money in contractual services?
Um, already it has saved us on contractual services with communication. We used to contract, uh, in excess of seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, a year, uh, to have a, a contractor to just keep the communication systems open when it was the old system. That, we have eliminated those contracts and our I T takes over that, that, their, that person's entire function. We're rather than paying him seventy-five thousand dollars for thirty hours of work, uh, or less a week, we actually have full-time staff doing it, a lot more work for a lot less. But we're, we're always looking for ways to eliminate some of these outside contracts and let I T take care of our contracts. Uh, currently we have a program, we're now building a lot of our PCs in-house so we can have them standardized. Uh, we were going, we were out, we were actually, uh, sending out our bids to try to get ki, all of our computers built at the same time. The problem was that because we have so many computers out there, even identical-looking computers have different components in it, which makes it difficult when you need to try to repair most of these. Uh, even though they have a warranty, we keep them a lot longer than a one-year warranty on them. So what we do now is we buy components in bulk and we're building them in, in-house on our spare time. And then that way we have, we, everything we have, we know exactly what's inside of each of the systems. If something goes down, we know exactly where we can get a replacement part and we can get it a lot quicker than, than dealing with outside, uh, you know, the H P's, Dells and so forth. So everything's getting built in-house now.
So that seems, that's six, six folks in I T, I wouldn't have expected that, seems like an awful lot of employees, but...
We do, we do.
It's just crazy how things are...
Well, remembering that G I S, a G I S technician was mostly, uh, was brought on board right after this when we noticed the real need, we, we've asked for G I S technicians for a number of years. Uh, if we really didn't see, we kinda kept putting them off, putting them off. When the communications center came on board and then we brought in Sedona and, and a lot of the other departments, we realized we need to have someone on board that can actually go ahead and map the system out. Uh, there's just a little bit too much writing on, on, on not having the system mapped out, uh, you know, appropriately. And then, of course, that brought on other departments saying, well, if we can't use, if we can use him, why can't we expand his work elsewhere? And we agreed that if he's, as soon as he starts dwindling off on one thing, he needs to start working on some other projects to make sure that we have a full, full-blown G I S mapping of everything we have, both above and below ground.
So for years and years, we have really been G I S deficient. To the extreme, we have not invested anything in that and we've used the county's system. But that's just not working for us anymore for, the technology has just expanded so much that, I mean, we'll be using it in our utilities department and, um, expand it greatly to our benefit to, to the citizens.
Yeah, we, we, we do help, we, we've done some work with, with the county's G I S system, but we, we do find it very deficient. And, uh, our radio technician, again, we're eliminating some contracts, bringing them on board and, uh, and, and we just, we deal, we need to have someone in-house that if we need, we can call them and get them self-repaired. Currently, we, many times we have to find innovative ways to work around stuff because we can't get a technician in here for two or three days and in some cases, well over a week before we can get a technician in. We really need someone in-house before someone gets hurt. All right, purchasing is on one oh-five, and the accomplishments and goals. One oh-seven actually goes, oh, excuse me. One oh-eight has, has their actual budget. One oh eight has, has their actual budget. Um, the biggest thing we have here, of course, is the, the reclassification of the personnel. Like it was depicted on, on the slide, it was an increase of about twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, and that includes benefits. We'll go to non-departmental. That'll be page one twenty-five. As much as we try to eliminate paper doesn't only work for us. Just a reminder, the non-departmental is, are, are items that don't fit into any other cat, any other department. Traditionally, we have like lease, lease, uh, purchase payments, uh, our, you know, global liability insurance, auction fees, those kinda things go in there, our deductibles for our insurances, they go in here.
So, the auction fees, is that to put things on the public surplus? They charge you for that?
Yeah, they charge us. They, they bill us for it. Uh, we actually pass those costs on to, to the buyer. So, it's actually pass-through, but we actually have to expense it out.
Is that working out well, those selling the stuff on that, through that program?
Oh, certainly, certainly. And, uh, let me just look at what those numbers are. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, when we had the, um, let me see, sale of property this upcoming, we're gonna do about twenty thousand dollars this year. In two thousand and fifteen, we, we did a hundred and seventy-six thousand. Next year, we're proposing to do about twenty thousand. And past years, we would take six or seven of our staff members, some from Clarkdale. We would have an auction every two years and we'd make twelve grand between the two cities. You know, we, we, we were beating ourselves up over, over this. Now, we don't have to do that. We put, uh, things up on, 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 even, some of the smallest items, we'll put them up there so they, they may not bring anything, but it doesn't cost us anything to put it up there. It's a pass-through, comes in, goes out. Um, and we, and we at least recover more money now than we did in the past. Surprising what we can put out there and people will actually buy them. Okay, we'll move on to, um, our debt service fund. So, have you actually moved over to page two twenty-seven? What this basically is, the, the debt service fund that we have actually only records the, um, it's currently only recording the, um, the God loan that we have for the recreation center. As you can see, we, we pay one point five million dollars a year on the debt service for the, for the God loan. Nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of it next coming year will be for principal and, uh, five hundred and ninety-four thousand will be in interest alone. As, as a note, the, all the debt, uh, that is owed by the water companies stays in the enterprise fund. They, they're totally segregated from the general fund and any other fund. They have to be self-sufficient in the county and the city has always supported, uh, keeping them totally independent. And then we do.
And that, just from fresh memory, when is that going to expire? That rec center?
I saw it in there somewhere.
They've got it on the next page, uh, August first, two thousand and twenty-seven. There's no questions. I'll move on to the fiduciary funds. The fiduciary funds. There's two, there's two, uh, two, two small funds in there. One of them is the alternate pension and benefits plan fund. Uh, you may recall that this had been around for many, many years. It actually, uh, provided our health insurance benefits when we were, when we were self-funded. We did away with it when we went into the Verde Valley Schools Pool, Verde Valley Trust, and then eventually we came to Arizona Public Employers Health Pool, who, of which we, they still provide our health insurance benefits for us. Uh, we still have a balance in that particular fund, um, roughly fifty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, this particular fund was used to help, uh, with, um, short-term disability for a number of years till we were actually, uh, till we got it down to manageable levels. We can't use this money for any other purpose, except for some sort of a benefit to the, to the city, to the city employees. And that's why we don't, can't move it into general fund. We won't expend anywhere else, so eventually we will use it. Uh, but right now, we're still, have a balance of fifty-seven thousand dollars in there. We also have the alternate pension benefits plan that we've been, huh, that's my fault. Um, we've been, uh, already authorized to eliminate this particular trust. We, we used to, um, contribute to the, uh, in, uh, insurance premium, fire insurance premium would go to them roughly twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. We stopped putting money into this fund because it was already at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, this particular fund will eventually disappear. We no longer, this was used for volunteer firefighters. We do not have volunteer firefighters per se, the way we had them structured before. Uh, we're having a hard time fighting volunteer firefighters 'cause, uh, basically, a volunteer firefighter has to be fully certified as a firefighter. They'll come work for us two or three times, they find a job and they're gone. And I'm not kidding, about two or three times and they're gone. So, we, it wasn't worth our while, it isn't worth our while to keep this particular fund going. I have contacted an attorney that, that Steve pointed me to. He's kind of, he's on board whenever I get around to it. He'll help us eliminate the pool. And we, I've been working on this for the last eighteen months or two years.
Couple of years.
Just can't find the time to get it done, but I will eventually get this particular trust dissolved.
So, share every, with everyone so they understand where those funds will be placed? The two hundred thousand dollars?
Where they were being placed?
Well, where, what will happen to them?
Um, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we've talked about this on and off. I'm not exactly sure where they can go. Uh, we've talked about possible options, using it to, to, to go to public safety, uh, to help that cause. We've talked about maybe using them for some type of retirement benefits. Uh, we haven't really decided.
Is it limited?
Excuse me?
Is it limited on what you can do with it?
I would suspect it probably is.
There are only certain things you can do.
This is, this is real complicated. This is one of those where, where an expert is, is necessary. I think we even found that, um, we needed the board to disband the body and we didn't have a board. We didn't have a fully conscious.
Right, we had to go.
We had to go get another person. So, we have to find somebody to serve to then...
Right, I knew that.
...through the, the unwinding process and the disposition of the funds in accordance with, with the law.
With the law.
Right. And, and the board, we do have, we did have a full board meeting in December and they voted to disband it. I just need to get with Attorney David.
Neater Debbie.
Neater Debbie. And, and he's already agreed that he will help us out as soon as I'm ready to sit down and talk to him and get this thing ironed out, so... But anyways, I beat that horse pretty good. Questions on this? Okay. That's mine. Your budget one.
Madam Mayor, members of the council?
You have the same page numbers that everyone else is, yeah. One twenty-nine. Oh, they, well, it starts on one twenty-nine, but it covers four pages.
I was gonna jump right to capital unless anybody has any question on operations. Uh, there were three capital projects requested under engineering services. The first was the Riverfront Old Town Connection Trail. Uh, there's a grant being applied for that, so that would be grant-funded. This would be a pass-through. Uh, there's a, we'd like to conduct a drainage plan to remove Cottonwood Village as well as Casa del Sol condominiums from the floodplain. That would also be grant-funded, uh, if we could find that grant. The only project on there that is not grant-funded is the stormwater program. That was an unfunded mandate from the EPA. Basically, they're requiring us to inspect and clean out all of our storm drains annually. The vast majority of that, forty thousand dollars, will go towards those culvert cleaning. A small portion of it will go towards public education and employee training, but... Anything else on engineering services? Yes, sir?
Are you, it's cold?
I'm a little chilly, yeah.
Where is the thermostat?
Behind the plug.
Oh, behind the plug?
We had, uh, talked about the, the new FEMA map and how Old Town is in floodway now and there might be, uh, we might be doing a study at some point to look into that. What's, what's the status on that? Obviously not being funded this year?
Um, no, we do have a four hundred thousand dollar grant, though, from the Flood Control District to do a citywide drainage study. And one of the things that's gonna come out of that study is a priority of projects. In fact, we'll come back to council, uh, one, once or twice to decide on that priority of projects. That project in Old Town is already at the very high-end list. Most likely, that will have to be flooded by the county flood control and/or the general fund.
But will that, that would be happening this coming year?
No, because the four hundred thousand we have right now is partially in this year and partially in next year. So, the earliest it could be would be the following fiscal year.
So, not seventeen, you mean eighteen?
Yes, sir.
And that's just to do the study?
That could be both, depending on the overall cost.
Both you mean the study and any remediation?
Yes. And then there's a follow-up to remediation in which you have to file the FEMA, you have to file the FEMA floodplain revisions. That's also not an inexpensive process. So, there's actually three phases to that project.
So, when will we know if we're not going to get that money? I mean, so we can plan to put some money aside for that?
That'll actually be one of the things coming up. So, right now, we're doing, still in the data collection phase for the citywide drainage study. It'll probably be this fall to next spring. We'll sit down and we'll, we'll go over all the projects that they've come up with, that the consultant and staff have come up with and what the council sees as the highest priority. So, it will be this fall or the spring before we're sitting down to finalize that priority list.
Okay.
Which will probably be right before next budget season when we'll be requesting that for the flood control district.
I, I believe originally, the, um, the project was, the study was funded all at once by the flood control district and then the consultant said they weren't able to do that entire book of work in this, by the end of this fiscal year. And then, so the district agreed to roll over half the funds into next year so the consultant could do the work.
Got it. And that's one of the reasons that flood control district money, as far as flood control grants go, is one of the best grants to get. It doesn't come with all the federal strings attached. It also, they tend to be very flexible, like Steve mentioned. When we can go back, say, we'll roll some of this, some of these funds over.
Right.
This is a four hundred thousand dollar study.
Anything else in engineering services? If you'd like, we can jump to public works. Under capital, there's also three items under capital. Um, one of them very minor, just need a new copier. I'm not sure if you were copying it on the notice that came in from Sierra Vista. The Sierra Vista transfer station this year unfortunately had an accident in which a member of the public, it was actually a fatal accident. Uh, as a result of that, we asked our safety consultant to come up to our transfer station to give us some, some feedback on improvements that could be made. And that's why we're requesting that twenty-seven thousand dollars. That's anything from a, from some safety handrail to signage. Uh, there will be some, uh, some safety handles, probably the most expensive part of that. Maybe some small retaining walls.
Stockpile cleanup, was that the brush?
Uh, it's not the brush. This is, uh, everything from construction material to, uh, fill material that's in the rear waste treat, waste treatment plant yard. But it's just accumulated over the years that we'd like to get cleaned up. It's probably, uh, could consider be a violation of our own stormwater.
I still feel very strongly we should try to get the city out of the transfer station business. And that's a good reason why they're, that twenty-seven thousand five hundred bucks. I just feel like that would have been responsibility of a private contractor. I think it was being run, you know, more, more efficiently, costing us less when we had a private contractor and they're doing that. I feel like we should look at that again, but I know we've talked about that many times.
Any additional items for public works?
I do like the fact that we're able to keep it. Because we have been able to do it ourselves, we're able to keep it open to the public, which was the council's discussion at the time, um, because otherwise, it was, um, waste management was just reducing and reducing and reducing the number of hours and raising the cost. And people are just driving by and dumping in the forest more often.
And with the fee structure change this year, we should see some real improvement.
The, we, we actually were in the black until you shared that you wanted contractors to have services. And that's when we hit the red, like, big time.
Right.
So, until we shut that down again, um, now we're inching our way back to the black.
Right. And as you'll recall, uh, raising the fees for contractors was also part of that discussion, but it never happened. So, but now we've implemented that, so we're back in the black, which is great.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead and move on to our planning and zoning. That's page one oh nine. The actual budget, not numbers, are on page one eleven. Budget, the biggest, the biggest, uh, increase we have is, is the, in personnel and that's mainly because we're adding that one, uh, position into that spot. Uh, goes from a half-time to full-time, uh, as far as the system is concerned. We don't have any, any capital planned for next fiscal year.
I do know that, I'll jump in there. I do know that, I believe we also looked at our planning and zoning department as compared to all the other, many of the other ones in the valley not too long ago. And I believe we were actually, as far as number of people, time to complete permits, uh, you know, we were actually higher on that number with, we, we were performing more services with less people than any other one in the valley, I believe, at that point. So, I think we, we've been trying to work that one pretty hard.
Yeah, we, we've been, we've been real fortunate. The staff there is, is, really produces a lot with what little staff they have. Uh, we always get complimented, especially from people that come outside of this, from outside the state, are very impressed with how quickly we can meet with them and, and, uh, get things done. Any questions on it?
You'll notice under building maintenance, a lot of smaller items under capital improvement, but none of them, the only large item is the twelve thousand dollar, which is for the dirt... But none of them, the only large item is the twelve thousand dollar, which is for the dirt at the Little League ball field. It's actually kind of a expensive material to have trucked in. What we're trying to do is put that on a program. So instead of buying fifty, sixty thousand dollars worth of dirt every six to eight years, let's just go ahead and buy twelve thousand dollars worth of dirt a year and replace two fields at a time, trying to keep the whole thing, the whole complex, looking good. So that's what we're recommending in that area. The other items, again, rehabilitating park irrigation systems. The Public Works Building, we're actually looking at a kind of an energy savings. Can we get some blinds in there to, uh, cut down on AC costs? And then the other large item is the Tarex. And unfortunately, we got a smoking deal on that prod, that piece of equipment when United Rental shut down. But the maintenance on it is a little expensive. The tires alone are about six thousand dollars for all four. Any other questions on building maintenance?
How, I'm sorry. Do you mind if I just ask a couple questions? The, the Tarex, you said you gotta replace the tires on that? Is that right?
Yes, sir. Under capital outlay. Uh, it's the first item under capital outlay.
You use it pretty often?
Yes, in fact, for several different, uh, throughout town. Uh, the biggest use of it now was really increases the Christmas lights, because we're kicking them up, putting them down all the time. But it gets used, I would say, almost every building throughout town.
Oh, I'm sorry. How often are we replacing the tires on that? It's not an annual thing, that's probably every several years.
I think we've had it for at least three years now. I mean, this is the first time, so yes, sir.
Do want to mention that, that this department does five and a half staff members. And they, they keep grounds, building. They keep, they, they do fabulous job of maintaining the, these facilities with only five and a half people. I think they, they've really stepped it up. David Hausman, actually, has took over the, the, that particular department. And, uh, the general, uh, all the other staff members have been very receptive. And they're very prompted getting our requests done.
I'd just add that David Hausman and Mark Laramore both really stepped up to do an excellent job of that department. Thank you.
Surprisingly so, we're moving relatively fast. Water is two fifty-seven. I'll, I'll do most of the presentation. I have Roger here. He's, he's gonna back me up when I stick my foot in my mouth. So... That's the, that's the beginning of it. If you'll flip over to... The page two, uh, sixty-one. That's where the actual budget is at. We have a sizable increase, big portion of that happens to be capitals. Capital listing, okay. Capital listing is on, is on page two sixty. We usually budget a fairly large amount, uh, for, for water upgrades and reservoirs. Part of that is we sometimes, there's been years when we, uh, expect things to happen. And then some years, we don't expect things to happen. And then we have heart freeze, and we have water line breaks, main breaks. And then we're, we're struggling to try to keep. Fortunately, we always make sure that we budget plenty of, of reserves to make sure we cover these costs. Uh, so rather than just sticking it and putting it down as a reserve, we just put down, uh, water system upgrades and reservoirs. That's our biggest, that's our biggest, uh, increase that we have there. Outside of that, we rebudgeted the Mingus reconstruction system upgrade. We budgeted for last year, we didn't get it done. We're putting it in the budget again. As far as the operation was concerned, um... Actually, we're in relatively, relatively good shape. We have equipment, uh, maintenance and repairs went up a little bit. Our arsenic systems under our contract, under other services and charges, uh, we budgeted four hundred thousand. We only did fifty-one thousand, uh, this year. We're still converting that system over to the new, new type of media. Did want to mention that we, we started a new vehicle type program over at the water company. Uh, as vehicles become aged roughly three to four years or so, they're being, uh, pushed out to streets, to herf, uh, to other departments that need vehicles. Because we need, we need, we find that the more and more so, we're needing more and more dependable vehicles at the water department. They get called out on holidays, uh, weekends, rainy days, snowy days. And we need to make sure that we have good, dependable vehicles. So before they get too many miles and get totally run down, because they're all ridden hard, we, after about three to four years, we're starting to switch them over to public works. So they too have some vehicles to go ahead and, and, uh, continue to run around. Most of those departments have vehicles that are in excess of ten years old. As you may have seen, some of them are paints peeling off. Others, we've had to repaint. And when they do that, I ask them to keep another five years. So we, we're, we're trying to make sure that we kind of spread some of those vehicles around. So we have the kind of old vehicles throughout the, the organization.
Rudy, it looks like you have cleanup of stockpile on that capital outlay as well. Is that the same?
I think that's a shared cost. Some of the material back there is ours as well.
Okay.
You, you may find some, I believe there's some in the wastewater also, because if they, it's their problem, they have to, and yet the cost for that, too. As you, as you can see, our capital, especially our capital in this particular budget, we really, really push it way up there. We haven't, we've been real fortunate that we've kept it well under a million dollars from year to year. But our capital, we usually push it up there because we, we, we don't know what's gonna happen. When the system goes down, we, we've gotta be ready to go, and we've gotta have the budget authority. Many times, like, I'll get a, I'll be able to email the following day after a repair's been done. And they pretty much don't go through me, they just like...
I'm in the doghouse.
Look at the ADEQ annual fee line.
The ADQ annual fee?
Yeah, it just looks not so correct.
Oh, the, the percentage. Thank you. Those are the kind of things, if you find, if you're, as you're reading this, you find little quirky things out there, please send them over to, the cleaner the document is, when it goes to GFOE, the better it is for us. Any questions? I will point you to, uh, the page two sixty-three. And then a few pages beyond that. Uh, basically, it has the, the debt service that we talked about earlier. And this meaning, uh, where we actually allocate the debt service in the water company that belongs to the water company. It's not in our debt service fund, it is actually in their enterprise fund. And it has breakout schedules right after that also. Questions? Again, I'll, I'll keep repeating myself, but if, if something comes up, please get hold of me. You can call me at, at three four zero two seven one zero. Or you can call me on my cell, too. That's a lot of times you can get hold of me on my cell, the three oh one four seven one nine. Uh, we'll move on to wastewater. Page two fifty-one is where that section starts. But the numbers are... On page two fifty-five, two fifty-four has a capital outlay for that particular department. On there, we have the reclamation plant. It's eleven point three million dollars. That includes the reclamation plant. Also, some money is also set aside for the wastewater treat, the current wastewater treatment plant, the digesters and blowers over in that area. As you may recall, we're, we're starting to do some, uh, major upgrades to the old wastewater treatment plant. It's been around for thirty years now, going on thirty years. Yeah, we're going on, it's going on thirty years. And, uh, it's time to kind of give it a bit of a facelift, so we're, we're, we're setting some budget authority, start getting some of that work done. The opening of the new wastewater treatment plant will be very helpful, because it'll take the load off of that big, the big plant, so we can get some of that work done in the next, uh, year or so.
What's the Mingus cell line? What's that?
That's a piece of reclaimed water line on Mingus Avenue that's, uh, basically in front of the airport. And it, and it's a missing piece of reclaimed line. We need to install that to, um, charge the lines that are down in town.
Right. It says cell line, cell line, is that gonna feed the agricultural development that's going out on Willard?
Yes.
It'll, it'll help with that?
Yeah, because that, that's kind of a part-time irrigation, probably, the way things are set up now. So we need to install this line, so we can get, uh, a full-time water supply out there. The way things are arranged, it only runs about three days a week.
Okay.
Questions? Is this correct? You have one's, that's, if you were overloaded here? If there's no questions, we'll move on to the airport. Those numbers begin over in, on page two oh five. I said two oh one, but it's actually two oh five. Just, you know, the numbers that, that are on here is actually when that particular department begins, with a, with a description, the goals, accomplishments, and budgetary highlights. And there's about four or five pages that go along with it. This particular budget saw a drop of almost half a percentage point. The big drop that we've got is, of course, the fuel expenses. Uh, they've been, they've been kind of staying relatively low from over the last year or so. We hope it stays low, but if it goes up, we compensate with it by, of course, raising our fuel prices at the airport.
So now the fuel cell, I'm trying, am I getting as much revenue because the price of fuel has dropped?
No, our, our fuel prices are, are set up at, they're, they're seventy-eight cents per gallon of, of surcharge. So if price goes down, it doesn't matter to us, it just helps us sell more fuel. But it's still seventy-five cents, seventy-eight cents, again, seventy-eight cents a gallon more per gallon. That's our surcharge.
And even with that, we're still lower than most people?
Traditionally, yeah, we, we are. Because we set our price based on, on the load when we get it, uh, if the sudden price starts to go up, we'll end up low. If we're at the high end, as we were about eighteen to twenty months ago, and the price suddenly starts to go down, we may find ourselves on the high end, at least till we dwindle down that fuel, and then, then we'll be used at the low end. I used to check them out on a weekly basis. I don't know, do you still check them on fairly often? You do? Yeah. So they're, they're checked, we check the fuel on, Helen checks the fuel on, on a weekly basis. We also check the levels to make sure that we, we can order in time to make sure we have fuel available.
We're funding almost seventy percent of the airport with fuel sales, so that's a pretty good deal for us.
It, it works out relatively well. We still, we still are poking general fund money. Remembering that currently, I think all of our litigation is being charged off to, to, uh, to the general fund. Uh, we, we are looking to probably shift that where it belongs onto the airport and have them go ahead and pay for it. So it, we show more realistic cost of what that airport's costing. Questions? Okay, we're getting close to finishing. Next is street maintenance and construction. For the most part, everything seems to be well in line. Uh, we do have a little bit of, of, uh, debt service allocated for, for that particular fund. And that's because of the, the projects of, that we've, uh, the excise tax bond that we actually floated last year. So they'll be paying for their street portion. Mind you, they do not pay for the water and, or wastewater lines that go underground. Those are, of course, allocated to the different, and enterprise funds. They're only paying for the streets and sidewalks portion of it. On page one seventy-six, you can see the, the capital that we're looking for. We have a two hundred thousand dollar street suite for Inter. And the other forty-nine thousand, uh, is a grinder that we're looking for. Uh, currently, we still get a little bit of complaints on how uneven some of our sidewalk, sidewalks can be. Rather than going through the expensive process of having to take an entire slab out and put a new one in, we're looking for a grinder, so we could just, if it's off, it's just a smidgen, we could just grind it smooth and we're good to go, rather than pulling out an entire panel and having to replace it. Now, eventually, we may have to replace it. But in the meantime, it'll keep us from having to replace a ton of panels throughout the, the city.
I was gonna, on that topic, I, somewhere on the interwebs, I saw somebody had made some sort of a statement that the city hasn't done any improvements to roads, streets, or wa, some water infrastructure for like a ten years. And I thought to myself really hard, I think we have. I mean, we do, we allocate so much every year for sidewalk improvements. We've replaced lots of water line. We've built South Twelfth Street, North Twelfth Street. We've extended Mingus, so Tenth Street. So I guess we've actually done stuff in the last ten years.
Quite a number of neighborhoods, almost every year we do a neighborhood streets.
Yeah, okay.
And Willard Avenue extension has been a godsend for a lot of people.
Just checking.
You can say whatever you want, it doesn't make it true. And if it's on the internet, it must be true, right?
Um, we, on, on page one eighty-two, we have the cap, the fairly large amount of capital for the projects that are being done over, uh, the Willard, the main Mingus, Willard to Main section of it. We have two point one million dollars set aside for that particular project, as well as, as a sign replacement, uh, for about twenty thousand.
What, what is HSIP? What's that?
It's HSIP, Safety, Highway, something.
Yeah, they made a new font.
John, we got acronym, HSIP. It's in the back, or is it? Oh, good, good. We'll add it to our acronym at the, at the back.
I think it's Highway Safety Improvement Program.
I thought there was a safety, too.
We'll, we'll get it correct and put it on here. Oh, just in case you hadn't noticed it, in the far back at page about three hundred, we have a glossary. It's pretty detailed, and about two pages of, of acronyms that are in the document. So there's no questions on street, we're down to our last one, our CIP fund. It'd be page two thirty-three. Our CIP fund would be page 233. We have $350,000 for railroad wash improvements. We have $132,000 for the Civic Center, HVAC. And we also have the construction of the kids' park restroom, the riverfront park restroom, and the garrison relocation and rehab. But I don't think it's gonna get relocated, is it?
It's actually relocated, yes.
Okay. Okay. That totals up to $754,000. And they have, that particular fund has a little bit of, of debt service also to cover the cost, the, the payments on the, on their, their portion of the projects.
We'll be bringing the design on the restrooms to the council for your review on, at the next meeting. As we're ready to put it out for construction bids.
Been working on this for a couple of years, so that's great news.
Much needed, very much needed.
Pardon?
They're very much needed.
Yes.
And that basically concludes today. If I'd known it was gonna be this easy, I would have had everyone walk in today. Not really. Any questions? Again, we'll, we'll resume tomorrow. We've got some of the bigger departments tomorrow. Police and Fire will be joining us. We also have the outside agencies joining us tomorrow. Again, you know, I can't stress enough, as you go through a document, you find errors and stuff, please make sure you bring it to our attention, this is still to propose, so we can make changes. Again, I encourage people to, to call and, and, or drop me an email with anything that, that might come up, if you have any questions you might have.
And that's for members of the public also? Can you give them your phone number, please?
My phone number at, at my office is 340-2710. My cellphone is 928-301-4719. Or you can contact me at R-R-O-D-R-I-G-U-Z@cottonwoodaz.gov. Or look it up on the website, at cottonwoodaz.gov.
So any members of the public have questions about the budget? Please feel free to call. You have his cellphone number and he would be glad to help you with your questions.
May I ask one quick question? I'm so sorry. Can I ask one, on the capital outlay, we don't have the Civic Center, the NACOG grant that's coming through?
That's, that's on, under CB, CDVG.
Okay, so it's separate?
Yeah.
Than what we would see here?
Yeah.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
All right, so I would make a motion to adjourn. The mayor made the motion, the vice, Mr. Haldige seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
To adjourn.